Call to order, the October 6th, 2022 Avon Town Council meeting. Please join, please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kathy, would you take roll call, please?
Greg Zuzen.
Present.
Don Loudon.
Present.
Robert Pope.
Present.
Aaron TV Ball.
Present.
Steve Eisenmarth.
Present.
We have a quorum. Next item on the agenda, the consent agenda, which include check register for 10-6 and the 9:22 work session, as well as approval minutes from that, from that council meeting. There's any discussion? If not, entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion. We accept as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Kathy, would you take a roll call vote, please? For?
Greg Zuzen.
For.
Don Loudon.
For.
Steve Eisenmarth.
For.
Aaron TV Ball.
For.
Next item on the agenda, the first of two public comment opportunities. You may comment on items on the agenda that are not our public hearing or in a specific matter within the council's jurisdiction. Please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address, and limit your time to three minutes. No one coming up. We'll close that session of public comment. Next item on the agenda, department updates. Bill, Mr. Peoples.
Yes, sir. Bill Peoples, I'm the planning director here for the town. Plan Commission meeting went pretty well, although it was long at the last meeting. The October meeting of the Plan Commission has five items on the agenda. All five of them, or six items, five of the six are subdivision plats, and then one of them is a DPR. And one of the DPR and one of the subdivisions is attached at the hip. There, it's a Satori Point has a two-unit sort of multi-tenant retail center being constructed, or wants to be constructed out in front of it, and they need to re-subdivide that property. November Plan Commission, we've gotten most of the stuff in. It looks like we're only going to have two items on the agenda for public meeting on that one. And one of them is Stanfield Crossing, which is a three-lot commercial plat right next to the Taco Bell over here. So that has been going on for quite a while, and it looks like they want to subdivide that property next to the Taco Bell over here at near Avon Avenue into three lots for commercial development. A bank, a coffee shop, and an undecided user. And then the other one would have, would be for public hearing. They want to re-subdivide Bellwood to use the enhanced architectural standards. So that's already gone through the Plan Commission. They want to go through again to use the enhanced architectural standards and maybe get some more density out of that particular subdivision. Board of Zoning Appeals, one case on the agenda. It's a simple setback variance over here, Beechwood Center. Beechwood Center, they want to put a lot line right down the middle of the building and separate the building out into two sort of separate, different buildings. So one would have Royal King and then that old for-profit college space. And from there on over would be a separate, would be a separately owned entity, I believe by the owner of Emmys. The November BZA probably will only have one case, although we've been trying to dissuade it. It's a used variance up on 100 North, maybe for a landscape contractor. But we've been working with the petitioner on that one, trying to tell them there might be better locations than that. That's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Thanks, Bill. Mr. Moore.
Steve Moore, Public Works Director. Crack seal, we just completed that project, and preservative seals started yesterday, and they should be done next week. Community crossings, we should hear whether we are going to be awarded or not later this month. On the trail construction, it's done. There's some overseeding that they need to do, and we're probably going to add in some drainage work. So it'll be, in addition to their current contract, it'll be good winter work, so we're thinking we're going to get some bid pricing for them. We're getting ready to do some tree trimming on Dan Jones Road for the Phase 1 widening project for the Duke relocation. Hunter South, next Monday through Thursday, the contractor will be shutting down traffic to one lane, one direction at a time, and they'll do some profile grinding and surfacing. So that'll just, we, they're doing that during the fall break, so the schools won't be involved, and so that'll be done next week. Hunter North Raceway Road Roundabout still, design, they're working on the storm calculations right now. Angelina Way and Roundabout Design is still underway. Dan Jones Road Widening Phases 1, or Phase 1 should bid in the November letting, and so we're getting ready for that, for construction for next year. Stormwater billing, we're getting ready for that. We're courting with the county right now, getting updated files. MS4 is active, doing inspections weekly and then after each rain. See, road contractors, roadside mowing contractors still doing that. They're picking up some more areas as we're taking in more areas, like the islands on Hunter South, who are starting to maintain those now. Pothole patching is really starting to pick up for some reason. So we're on that. And then I think everybody's pretty much aware of Ronald Reagan and 1050 over by Portillo's. We did close that off to right-in, right-out only for 1050 and for the Portillo's entrance, and then allowing a northbound left turn and closing off the southbound left turn due to high accidents and the fatality and just it. Me personally, I felt like Ronald Reagan, you know, was supposed to be a limited access road from the beginning. I think we are, you know, I'm in favor of reducing access to that road to allow for the free flow of traffic on Ronald Reagan. So I think it facilitates traffic better that way, and it makes it safer for the people. So we will be making those permanent changes next year. Right now it's temporary with barricades and barrels and signage, and it will then be with concrete and the same signage next year. So, any questions?
Steve, I just want to say I strongly agree with you there on Ronald Reagan, and I think it's just a good reminder to all of us as we hear things on Ronald Reagan and we hear of potential cuts or we need to restrict access. It is, it's always a safety because of the high volumes going through that area, so it's definitely the right way. One question I had on that backup on the 100 South, does it look like it's just one week they're going to have those one-way?
Yeah, it's just going to be each day they're going to be doing grinding on Monday, then surfacing it for the one direction, and then it'll be grinding one day and then surfacing the other direction, so just, just the four days.
And Bill, you know, are they giving us any signal about the end of the season?
Still hoping before Thanksgiving that we're opened up.
It's going to be the turkey we're going to need, I'll tell you.
We're still hoping, yeah.
All right, thanks.
Hey, Steve, real quick, I got a thing on my door talking about Rejuvatec.
Yeah, that's, that's a preservative seal.
Okay.
Yeah, so basically, that's the chemical that we apply to asphalt to help extend the life of the asphalt. And so that'll be done in your neighborhood, whatever day that's stated, yeah.
Thanks, Steve. Ms. Marshall.
Hello, Shelby Marshall, Parks Director. I want to thank you guys first and foremost for Appreciation Week. It's Employee Appreciation Week, so we've had some really great team bonding and building activities this week. So thank you guys for that and recognizing that out of your employees. Parkside, we had new mowers, the two new mowers that were approved a few months back arrived yesterday. They were used yesterday. They're beautiful, so thank you guys for that. We had a Harvest Moon event this past weekend. It was Saturday, October 1st. This was a town event that was partnered with Washington Township Parks and Avon Chamber. It was a really good event. We created a survey and got some feedback to help make the event even better and bigger for next year. We received eight new picnic tables. They are in the shelters, and then some are around the parks, and we've ordered six more. They are composite and will last a lot longer than the wooden ones. So those have been placed around the park. And then Ryan and I have had some discussions on park properties and when we're going to move forward with that. I'll take any questions.
Do you have any estimate on attendance for the Harvest Moon?
I do not. We have not had a wrap-up meeting. It is scheduled for the week after next. So I've had, this morning I had a meeting with my staff and did kind of a pros-cons, how can we do better? What went really well, got some really good feedback, so we'll have a better idea of how many were at Washington Township Park and how many were up here after that wrap-up.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Nugent, Deputy Chief of the Police Department. We just had, unfortunately, an employee that resigned about three weeks ago from the department for some personal reasons. We wish him the best of luck, but as a result of that, and based upon our previous, actually our previously existing vacancies, we did start our new hiring process. You may have seen a graphic or two come out already on social media for that. We also are moving forward with a couple of promotions. These are promotions that we had talked about in 2022, as well as in 2023 as well, so anticipation of some other items on our agenda tonight. We're moving forward with that to kind of keep our structure in place, so we can ready, be ready to hit the ground running in January. As you know, we are part of Project Lifesaver. We're kind of the driving law enforcement agency. I do want to share with you, we have actually been in good communication with Danville PD and Plainfield PD, and both of their law enforcement agencies are onboarding with us as associate law enforcement members. So we'll be doing some training with their staff as well, trying to help them be prepared for those types of dispatch runs where individuals with cognitive disorders who are unable to take care of themselves can be located without potentially the terrible outcomes that we know exist. I do want to recommend or recognize Ryan as well for all of his work this week with employee appreciation. I made a comment earlier this week to some of my peers in the department. We walked into this room and saw how many people were actually here and engaged in discussions, and they weren't just silos of tables. There was intermingling, and, and those are some things that sometimes we take for granted, but it's just a really good testament to our leadership with Ryan and making sure that things are going very smoothly and finding ways to support all the departments, so I appreciate that, Ryan. I do also want to tell you that we have a grant that we have every year from Indiana Criminal Justice Institute. And this is a grant that we have actually secured funding since 2016 every year, anywhere between $20,000 to $80,000 a year for proactive policing initiatives to reduce crashes, violent crimes in our district primarily on Ronald Reagan. We had our audit about two weeks ago, and I was really pleased to be able to have a good audit with Julie Loker, as well as Dave Margeson. We're in that meeting together. We were characterized as the gold standard in the state of Indiana for our gold standard of our documentation and whatnot. So the grant itself actually opened up yesterday for us to reapply for 2023, and so hopefully that gold standard sticker we got will help us get that funding again in the following year. I did have some communications just earlier today with Shelby. She had a lot of concerns and questions and just trying to be proactive about finding ways to enhance park security. So we've had some discussions. She brought to light some mechanisms and concerns that they can do with park staff that we as the police department can help prepare them in training and resources and, and equipment and whatnot to kind of be prepared for certain events. So when you talk about the festival that we had here over the weekend, we talk about the July 30 event. As her team continues to grow and develop and have larger crowds, public safety needs to be at the forefront of that as it is everything else in town. So I just wanted to recognize her for that proactive effort and dialogue that we got started with today. Beyond that, we did have one critical incident a couple, about a week and a half ago now. A young four-year-old girl did sustain a gunshot wound. While I can't speak to the details of the case itself, I just wanted to recognize Avon Schools Officer Lieutenant Richard Craig. He actually was in the area. He responded to the scene and really was a big benefit for us as there were two other children in the family that were in schools, and he helped facilitate getting those children out of the schools early and prevent them or other kids from school buses from seeing what could have been a pretty disturbing scene with yellow tape and police cars and all of that. So really proud to have a relationship with him. He's doing a great job for, for the schools. And so with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions or clarify anything I've talked about. Yes, sir.
I always appreciate the, the way that you're doing the database mining of the errors database.
Yeah.
That, that has just been a kind of a fun and a good way to recover some of our things. So maybe if we're not already still doing it with, when our signs are down, is trying to look to see when, you know, when those occurred and if we have a accident report for those. We may already be doing that, but...
Yeah, that's something that I'm not intimately or directly involved with. Dave Margeson would probably be the better component for that dialogue, but I'll be happy to pass that along.
No, that's good, and Steve Moore and I, from a former life, we used to do that, go through the database and use keyword searches. And it was, actually, it's rewarding when you find those things, and then you say, oh, yeah, we can recover this and that, so...
Yeah, and I was going to say just another extension of that, too, is a lot of our officers are being very proactive about identifying dangerous locations, whether or not it's just poor driving, we can direct our enforcement efforts or if there needs to be some sort of a discussion at a larger scale. So we're just fortunate to have officers that are proactive in that regard as well, but to that specifically, I'll be sure and speak with Dave.
Thanks for going after those grants regularly. Your tireless effort is being recognized.
I like money, so...
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Brian. Mr. Wade.
Good evening. Jared Wade, Communications Director for the town of Avon. I feel weird, like I'm two feet right in front of Steve. I gotta put, there we go. All right. I don't, I don't. I have my wallet. All right, so a few things. First, Civic Ready is doing extremely well. Last time I gave an update, Robert, you were asking about some numbers, so I've got some numbers for you. We have four different categories. We have roadwork news, which is primarily updates, road closures, what's going on out there. Parks and Rec, if you subscribe to that, you would have got notification about Harvest Moon, if there's any last-minute changes, things of that nature. Community news, which could be anything community-related, and then emergency alerts, which is obviously emergency notifications. Roadwork News has 375 subscribers, Parks and Rec, 347, emergency alerts, 287, and Community News, 361. That's a total of 1,370 subscribers. These are individuals that have voluntarily jumped on our website and said, I want to know what's going on in roadwork, parks and rec, community, emergency. They have that control. They sign up for it. If they ever want to change their mind, if they say they don't want to receive something, they have that opportunity to do that at any point in time. A few months ago, you heard me talking about a video project from CSI that's finally coming to fruition. They sent a couple versions over the last month and a half, and I wasn't pleased with them, so I sent them back and wanted them to make some adjustments. A lot of the audio and video did not meet my standard for what Avon should have, and they made those fixes. They changed them. They look very good now. They just sent me another updated. We went through four revisions, but they sent me the most recent revision, and it looks really good. It looks really, really well, well done. I appreciate some of the community being in some of those videos. I appreciate some of the staff being in those videos. I think it's going to be a very well, it's going to be a, a great representation of the town, and for those that are interested in working here, living here, traveling here, whatever it might be, it's, it's going really, really well. Next Tuesday is class number four of the Greater Avon Citizens Academy. This is going to be on Public Works, Cemeteries and Township Assistance. Ryan and Steve are going to be there talking about Public Works. They've got about an hour to talk about all the different things that are happening in Public Works wise. They are very excited about that. Ryan gets giddy whenever we talk about roads and asphalt and anything of that nature, so he's very excited about that. Also, I want to, I want to say that there has been a tremendous influx in inquiries through either Facebook or directly by email on, on what's going on with the township, with the school, that whole process. And the reason that I bring this up is I, I think we did a really good job of providing accurate information on our website of how the process works, so that way there's no confusion, there's no opinions. It is a, this is the legal way that things happen. I think that that is helping to kind of curb some, some storytelling that might happen on social media. It's helping the community be able to share, hey, now this is the process, this is what happens, this is where they're at. They're not where everybody thinks that we're at. We're still way up in this other area. So the, the page that we designed a couple months ago, I'm seeing a lot of traction on that, that page, and we're able to use that as a reference point for education in the community. Lastly, last week, we, I don't think it was talked about, but we met with Bill Westfall for Phase 2 Leadership Training. I just want to give a shout out to Ryan and Aaron and everybody else that have kind of spearheaded that program and that incentive. I know that I'm gaining quite a lot of information, education. I know that several of the staff members that are, have attended, either in the past or are attending it for the first time now, are walking away significantly better prepared to handle some weird curveballs that are thrown every single day. So appreciation, Ryan, appreciation, Aaron, and everybody else that helped make that possible. That's all that I have. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Wade. Mr. Taylor.
Last as usual. And some, some of these things, some of these things may sound familiar to you like me from an hour and a half ago.
Don't they say save the best for last, though?
Pardon me?
Don't they say save the best for last?
Not always. Let's talk about Avon Logistics. We're in the process of speaking to someone right now that may be interested in building a 2.1 million square foot building, which would just about take up the rest of that property on 100 South. The million, 9,000 square foot building, they're putting footers in right now. You need to go down and take a look at that. Building 2, Lot 1. Building 1, Lot 2. The building's already up, 880,000 square feet. If you remember, the Duke Energy had trouble getting electricity to it because the tenant changed, and the tenant needed different, had different electric requirements. They had to go out and have a special cable made. They say it'll be in October 11th, and then by the end of the month. That was supposed to be in on August 5th, so it tells you it's not only you guys and us that have trouble getting things delivered. Duke Energy also has trouble getting things delivered. Avon Landing, if you've been up by there recently, you'll notice there's a pretty good-sized building that's mysteriously come out of the ground. That's first, the first building. It's the Hammer Group. Distribution Realty Group, of course, they've had two buildings, and they're not mysteriously coming out of the ground. They are out of the ground, nearing completion, at least in sight. Third building should start quarter one or two of next year. And Avon Landing Apartments, if you haven't been up there recently, a lot of wood on the ground and starting to see construction. Don't have a date of completion, but at least we know it's happening. And Ryan and I, for a long time, wondered whether or not that was going to happen. It finally is. Any questions? Be happy to answer.
Thanks, John.
Go back.
Jared, I didn't forget you.
He's already been on.
I know, I know. I think that's everybody. I'm just making sure that I didn't forget Jared either. Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Next item on the agenda, Council Comment and Liaison Reports. We'll start with you, Ms. Loudon.
I attended the Harvest Moon Festival, both here at the Avon Town Hall and then over at Washington Township, and it was a great event, well-attended during the two hours I was on properties. So great job to Shelby and the rest of the Parks Team and Washington Township's team as well. Last night, Greg and I and Ryan and some others from other boards attended the architectural interviews, and we have, you know, they all did a great job, but we have narrowed it down to two and going to be moving forward with some more information from them so that we can even streamline down to the, to the last one. Duke Energy Site Selection Group was here. Robert, Greg and I attended that last week. They presented us with a $10,000 grant, which was nice. But the group that came was the Site Selection Group out of Texas, and they talked with us about how large national-type companies select sites throughout the United States when they have a building or are looking for a place to, I guess, operate their businesses out of. Some of the things that they talked about were the, I don't know, manpower, the ability to get manpower to run them, the expertise of that manpower. So if they're an R&amp;D facility, they need a different type of manpower than someone that has a distribution center might need. They talked about how rail and highways could affect whether or not a company would come or consider your area. And then they also talked about utility capacity, so it was very informative, and I learned a lot, actually, in that meeting, so...
Also, I received a ton of feedback about this weekend's event, the Harvest Moon Festival, so appreciate everyone that worked on that. And I'd just like to say thank you to all the staff, even though we lost half of them after their update, for the Staff Appreciation Week. We lost them from the room or the audience. But no, I mean, you know, looking back over the last eight years here, I think when I first came here, it was, it was hard to get people, and now it's hard to not really appreciate them every minute for what they're doing. And so I think we've turned this place into a workplace that people love to be at, and so... But that's, thanks to all of you and all the hard work you've done over the years, and so I appreciate all of it. Thank you.
Mr. Zuzen.
Everybody's covered everything that I did, but I'm kind of shocked that Mr. Taylor didn't tell us about that $10,000 check we got from Duke Energy and the Site Selection Group that was here. But in addition to that, Duke has put our site on the map with one in Putnam County and another one within the state of Indiana nationally. So that's the first time for us, and it's been on inside Indiana business and everything else, so that, that's a good thing. And I thank John for kind of orchestrating that and putting it together. We did the interviews. We had Plan Commission. I do want to say thank you for the employees. Ryan does a great job. I appreciate Brian's comments to him. He has brought this team together. You know, our department head, Steve and Brian and John, Jared, Shelby and Bill, I was going to talk about you, but you left, so no. You know, it's working, and it's working as a team, and I appreciate that because it makes our job up here that much easier.
Mr. Eisenmarth.
Similar. On the Harvest Festival, I'll give credit to my wife because she, she was out directing parking cars. So Laura, I know you're watching somewhere out there, so thank you for all your hard work. It's, you're recognized here. Attended the fire station ribbon cutting. That was, what, what kind of caught me on that one is when you go through the facility is the quiet rooms that they had to decompress after rides and that, and just having some quiet spaces. I think when we're thinking about developing buildings and working with it, there's some, some great things we can see from some of these designs that are out there. So that was, they had just little things like the grill sitting out back with a covered area and an overhead fan. Just made kind of a nice environment that they had, so that, that was fun to see, and see a lot of people there, too. Plan Commission, I was sitting out in the audience. I kind of slipped out after 10 o'clock, and... and said, but you know what I really did like? You're giving credit to Bill, yes, did an excellent job that first case, even though it went on for a while, they were really hashing through everything and going through all the points, and I, I thought it was just very good. So, you know, appreciate Robert and Greg for your diligence to stick with it and just go up there and make comments, you know, that were there, but, but not take it too much, you know, let everyone do it. So that was fun. I, I like to watch these things from the audience. Instead of watching at home, I was back there kind of tinkered away on the computer while I was listening to you guys and doing that. But other than that, I'd say it's, it's been fun, fun couple of weeks of service here. So that's all I've got.
Thanks, Steve. Harvest Moon Festival, my little one and I were able to attend as well. We had a great time, great job to everyone involved. Site Selection Group, Planning Commission, kind of already been covered here. Collaboration Group, meeting we actually just met earlier today. A couple of things to note, to share. The School Board approved Phase One and Phase Two of the high school expansion, and they're already underway on, already working on Phase One, which is the, the east side of the high school. And Dave Cox shared some, a policy that the county has with their employees, they actually attach their employees' pay rate to CPI, to Midwest CPI. Just thought that was interesting. And then I, I had it in correction at the last meeting that I wanted to make a correction. I incorrectly stated that the school's budget was going to be increasing their revenue, excuse me, was going to be increasing 28 million. I was incorrect. The correct number's 25 million, and that's before roughly $10 million cap loss. I just, I want to make sure I'm correcting, providing correct information. That's, that's it for me. Moving on, next item on the agenda, new business, 2023 Budget Adoption. Mr. Cannon.
Yeah, I think we, we did everything we're required to do. I think we introduced this and Greg Garitas attended. We held our public hearing last time, and I think we're, this is the final step in the process. I'm happy to answer any questions, but Julie would greatly appreciate if you would adopt this tonight. Otherwise, she's going to drive up here before the meeting's over and probably choke us all so that we can get it submitted. It is due by November 1st, and it's not acceptable to do it at the second meeting in October. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
Can you just re? Can you just recap probably for the public of the ones, what is our increase? Where are we, where was our budget last year? Where is it going next year? And what is that increase?
Sure. Actually, last year our budget was 6.12 million dollars in the general fund, and this year we're going up to 70 million, or sorry, not 70 million.
Seven million.
That was a slip. Anyone listening, it is not 70 million. Or watching, 7 million, $70,000. So it is, it's a pretty good increase for us. Again, I think we talked earlier, we had really good assessed value growth. In 2022, we were up 16% from 2021, and we did actually just get our 2023 numbers as well, and it's 17.71% for 2023. So that's fantastic growth. That basically means in the last two years, we've had a 34% increase in our assessed value in our community. So we've gone up to 1.8 billion, and so that's, that's pretty substantial. And so I, to the council's credit for all the work you guys have done and John's work and everything we've done to kind of diversify our tax base and, and bring other development here. You know, some of that's probably the economy, so we need to be a little bit mindful of that, that housing prices, I think everybody got the letter, that housing prices are up about 20%, and so that very well could come back down. So we do need to be a little bit careful, which was kind of Greg's caution in terms of how we proceed with the general fund. Most of our other funds are, are pretty stable, but most of them did grow slightly. The whole town budget in 2022 was 24 million dollars, and so the whole entire town budget for 2023 is about 26 million dollars, so about a $2 million increase. And again, that's across all of our funds, TIF, MVH, all of our, Stormwater, everything that, that's growth across the entire budget. Some of that's revenue growth, some of it's other things, so it just depends. But we are doing that. I, I will also add, if you guys look at your budget proposal by fund, there's also a column there that shows our fund balance, and this is, we feel this is important, this is something we really did in the last couple of years, not only to give you context of what the budget is, but for you guys to also understand that Julie, Kathy and I and Greg Garitas are managing that, and not only that we're able to grow our budget, but that we're also maintaining healthy fund balances, and not only just maintaining healthy fund balances, but that they're still growing a little bit. And again, that becomes important when we want to bond or borrow money. That's, they want to see that we are being good towards of the taxpayers' dollars and that we're being a little bit conservative. And so again, that information is there, and, and we did grow in our fund balances as well. So again, I think the town's in a, in a great financial position, and we've been able to continue to, to grow the budget and add services, which I think is good. And I think, you know, we're continuing to try to hire police officers and dig ourselves out of that hole as well, so.
And to put that in, and to put that in perspective, our fund balance at 630 of 21 was $30 million. At 630 of 22, it's $36 million. So, all right, thank you, very good.
If there are no further questions or discussions.
I'll make a motion that we accept the 2023 budget as presented.
Second.
First and second. Kathy, roll call vote, please.
I'm sorry, we have a first and a second. Kathy, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Dawn Loudon? Four. Greg Susan?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Aaron TV Ball?
Four.
Steve Eisenbarth?
Four.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Resolution 2022-22, Adopt MHG Fiscal Plan.
Yeah, MHG is the proposed hotel along County Road 900 East, across the street from Costco. And so one of, this is the next step in the process, is how we're going to provide services to it if we agree to be annexed, and so the copy of the fiscal plan is attached, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Seeing some head shakes, no questions? If not, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt 2022-22 Resolution as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Kathy, would you take roll call vote, please?
Aaron TV Ball?
Four.
Steve Eisenbarth?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Dawn Loudon?
Four.
Greg Susan?
Four.
Next item on the agenda, Resolution 2022-23, Condemnation of Properties for Dan Jones Widening Phase Two.
Yeah, we're very pleased that on the Dan Jones widening, we didn't actually have to do a resolution like this. Fortunately, we were able to get every property owner to agree, and certainly we don't like to have to exercise this power, but there do come times where we have no other opportunity, option other than to proceed with condemnation. And unfortunately on Dan Jones Two, we, we knew we were going to have some challenging parcels. We have at least one, potentially two, that may need to go to condemnation. And so the council, that is basically filing litigation, so the council needs to direct Dan and our legal team and staff to move forward in that direction. And so we are asking for authorization to use condemnation again as a last resort if we're unable to come to agreement with the property owners.
Any questions for, for Ryan or Dan?
Are they just not accepting the bids, the property valuations?
Yeah, I believe the ones we have aren't, aren't being realistic about the value of their properties, so if they're not going to be realistic, we really have no other option, so.
And Ryan, they do have three estimates that they do, right?
Well, not initially. So initially, following the end-up process, depending on the value of the property, these in, in our case, we've done two appraisals. So you have a, a regular appraiser, and then you have a review appraiser. When it goes to condemnation, then you get the court appoints three more appraisers. So by the time you get through court, basically five people have determined what they think the value of it is. Unfortunately, a lot of times property owners think their values are worth something, but they don't typically want to go get appraisals. They just want to say what they think their property is worth. And so it, if it doesn't align with what their appraisal is with what they think it's worth, this is when we get into this issue. And I think on, on this one in particular, that's the problem that we're having.
Are these the properties that we're just taking a portion of their property, or are these ones we're taking the whole homes?
The two that we're having with are the total takes. So yeah, the homes.
So they're looking at it from the eyes of they can't, whatever money they're getting, they can't go buy. That's probably what they're looking at.
We're not sure what they're doing, but yeah, again, we have to, we, we can't pay them something other than what the appraised value is, so.
Right.
There will be additional appraisals. That's the reason I asked that question. So I, I feel like the process will, you know, be fair and moving forward with it. No other questions?
Other questions or discussion? Entertain a motion?
Maybe we approve Resolution 2022-23 as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Kathy, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Steve Eisenbarth?
Four.
Aaron TV Ball?
Four.
Greg Susan?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Dawn Loudon?
Four.
Next item on the agenda, Final Reading Ordinance 2022-23 Vehicle Take Home Policy.
Yes, this ordinance makes amendments to your take-home policy provisions, which are found in the town code in Section 2258. And this, these changes are designed to clarify that the take-home vehicle policy creates a privilege that's tied to an employee's need to respond to things in the town, that it's not a perk or an extra benefit. And it tries to clarify those issues and makes other minor changes. Your police have their own policy on this, I would just let you know, and, which we've also worked with them on, it's very good policy. So this makes changes on the administrative side. This is final reading.
Any questions or discussion for Dan? No? Anyone care to make?
Make a motion to approve Ordinance 2022-23 Vehicle Take Home Policy as presented.
I'll second that. And just note that we have two ordinances by that same numbers, but since you said vehicle take-home policy, it's clear.
One's a resolution, one's an ordinance.
Okay, that's the reason why.
I feel like that clarifies them.
So they can have the same number? Okay, gotcha.
We have a, we have a, we have a first and a second. Kathy, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Greg Susan?
Four.
Dawn Loudon?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Aaron TV Ball?
Four.
Steve Eisenbarth?
Four.
Next item, Final Reading Ordinance 2022-24 Record Retention Policy.
Yes, this ordinance simply takes the state law and regarding record retention and puts it into your code. The purpose of doing this is to make it easier for your employees and members of the public to know what these retention schedules are. These retention schedules are buried somewhere in the Indian Administrative Code, they're very difficult to find. And so this year, Ryan and I had a circumstance where we were dealing with these very issue, and we, I said, well, this would be a lot better if this were in your code. So this places the retention code for the entire, for every possible document we could have. This will assist our staff and the clerk treasurer in knowing how long to retain records and will allow them to develop a record retention policy internally, which conforms with this. This is final reading.
Any questions or discussion?
It's, it's well-written. I like the way you have the, each reference each area, and you, it's easy to find, so no, no questions.
Ryan probably helped do that. It's all right.
Way to go, Ryan.
I make a motion to approve Ordinance 2022-24 Adopting Record Retention Policy as Presented.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Kathy, roll call vote, please.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Dawn Loudon?
Four.
Greg Susan?
Four.
Aaron TV Ball?
Four.
Steve Eisenbarth?
Four.
Next item on the agenda, Final Reading Ordinance 2022-25 Donation Threshold Increase. That one you again, Dan?
Yes, this ordinance makes really one modification to your donation policy. You've not updated this policy for 18 years. And so back in 2004, when you adopted this policy, and I think you're one of the first towns that adopted a policy like this to kind of regulate donations, you said that small donations were anything $500 and less, and for that, the town manager could decide, and only if, it would only need to come to you if there was a problem, the town manager thought there might be a problem. And so over the course of time, a lot of your donations for fireworks, for example, are more than $500. And so we started talking about this last January, about the need to update this just to account for how much more things cost now, and to make it a little easier to administer this policy. So the only change that would be made here would be to change the definition of small gifts from 500 to 2,500. Still needs to be vetted by the town manager, and if the town manager has concerns, he still is required to bring it to you. This just allows small gifts, which have none of the concerns listed in your policy, to be approved by your town manager. This is final reading also.
Any questions for Dan? Any further comment? If not, anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept and adopt Ordinance 2022-25 Amending Donation Policy as Presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Kathy, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Greg Susan?
Four.
Dawn Loudon?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Aaron TV Ball?
Four.
Steve Eisenbarth?
Four.
Next item on the agenda, Final Reading Ordinance 2022-26 Amending Salary Codification Policy.
Yes, this, this ordinance modernizes the approach in your code for salary ordinance. So in the old days, the town used to put the salary of every employee in the town code. Of course, we recommended to the staff that in this day and age where a, a member of the public can easily find the salary ordinance, the actual salary ordinance, online through the town's website, and where also a citizen can either through your website or through the state of Indiana Department of Local Government, see the, see a salary report for every individual, that it was unnecessary really to list those in the town code since they're found elsewhere. And by doing so, that meant that every year, this particular ordinance did need to be amended year after year after year because you change your salaries year after year. So what this amendment would do would eliminate the position-by-position listing of salary amounts. It would refer to the salary ordinance as you adopt it, and it would otherwise leave everything the way it is. So it's, the design is to pull out those individual salaries so you guys don't have to view this ordinance in this section every year. This is final reading.
Any questions for staff? Any further discussion? Anyone care to make a motion?
Make a motion that we accept Ordinance 2022-26 Amending Salary Codification Policy.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Kathy, would you take roll call vote, please?
Robert Pope?
Four.
Greg Susan?
Four.
Dawn Loudon?
Four.
Steve Eisenbarth?
Four.
Aaron TV Ball?
Four.
Steve Eisenbarth?
Four.
Last one, Final Reading Ordinance 2022-27 Parking Prohibition, Charles Nelson Drive.
As you know, as the town council, only you, you and only you can designate areas of the town as no parking. Most of the town allows parking. You have seven areas of the, that are designated no parking. They are listed in Section 8-69, and then once you pass an ordinance including a no parking provision, then a sign goes up to notify persons out there. There, it was intended that as developed, Charles Nelson Drive would be no parking on both sides of the street, and that's the way the plat was approved. Now we are catching up the ordinance with that, so we can put signs up. And so what this ordinance would do would add Charles Nelson Drive, both sides, to the list of streets on which there is prohibited parking. And so that's what this would do, that is, there's actually a place in your code for this, and every time you add an area of no parking, we need to also bring that up to date in the code so that the parking violations can be enforced. This is final reading.
Any questions for Dan? Anyone care to make a motion? I'll make a motion, we adopt Ordinance 2022-27 Parking Prohibitions on Charles Nelson Drive as Presented.
I'll second.
I don't know. Kathy, you're going to have to make that call.
Aaron got that one.
I think you got it.
I, I, I'll.
I insist.
Okay, now we have an argument, arm wrestle.
I'm going to, I'm going to say, I'm going to say Steve made the call, had the second. Kathy, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Dawn Loudon?
Four.
Greg Susan?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Aaron TV Ball?
Four.
Steve Eisenbarth?
Four.
Next item on the agenda, legal council report. Mr. Taylor?
I would just report to you that we've been keeping your staff very, very busy. We appreciate Julie, Ryan, Suzanne, Steve Moore, everybody who's been helping us lately with some of the cases that we have for the town. And so if they seem busy, they are, especially this week where we asked them to kind of drop whatever it was they were doing and help us. So we, we continue to work hard on those matters, and we'll keep you advised.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, the second of two public comment opportunities. Anyone caring to speak, please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address, and limit your time to three minutes. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close that section of public comment. Next opportunity for council comment. Anyone? Seeing heads shake, move on. Next item, council calendar.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Could, could I amend my previous remarks to add Kathy as well, as being very helpful this week? And I yield the balance of my time to the town manager.
Of course, of course, yes, Kathy, thank you. Mr. Cannon, council calendar.
Yeah, so next meeting is October 20th, 7:00 p.m. At this point in time, I don't think I see, we see any need for a work session, so it'll just be a regular council meeting. But I did want to say as well, I know a couple of my staff said it, but I'm very appreciative that the town council is supportive of doing things like Employee Appreciation Week.